Good evening and welcome to the Belgrade Planning Board meeting of October 3rd. It is 6:03 and we have a forum. We're going to do a roll call. Tonight in the meeting, we have Mr. Richard Baker, who's going to be joining the board and we have a missing member tonight. We also have Peter Surgeon. We have Mr. George Seal and Mr. Preck Alexander and myself, Sarah Langgett. And we have in presence also our CEO, Hans Rossmussen. I would invite the members of the assembly here to introduce themselves, please.
St. Hammond, Hammond Lumber Company.
Thank you.
Matt Massey, Hammond Lumber.
Don Becker, Haley Ward.
I'm Ben Seacrest. I'm not here for the Hammond Lumber. I'm here for Julie Owensburg, which is after.
Thank you. So everybody's signed up the sheet here. That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate it. So we're going to proceed with new business. And the first item in new business is an application from Mike Hammond for Hammond Lumber. The location is 2 Hammond Drive, MAP 4, Lot 52. And the purpose is a commercial development review ordinance. And this is for a Hammond lumber shaving, storage, building. With that, I will give the floor to Hammond Lumber and see what we're going to be looking at.
First, to address question to Hans. Since we've submitted, there's been a minor modification in the building size due to some engineering that's ongoing. So the actual building is eight feet longer than documents you have. So we'll be at your say so. We'll resubmit plans or drawings at your pleasure. And tonight, if we could just mark the plan as same building except eight feet longer than proposed.
So that's the change on page six.
It changes that number as well.
Yeah, yeah. The square footage will be changed. And when we get to that, I can read those out.
Okay, and I inserted the new page six, but that new page is.
Now that we, yes, that's, yeah.
Just email it to me by next meeting. I'll correct it in the application. And you'll have to.
Couple unintended consequences. We were reviewing the engineer today, so we had the white things, just to list their length of them. And then, did you, excuse me, did you give them the mining number?
They don't have the mine number.
Okay, the application in one section calls for the certification number of the shoreline contractor. It wasn't, his name was listed, but not the number. I have the number if you need it.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay, so he can correct that as he goes, something. Okay.
Either hit him with an email.
Yeah, that will do. So you folks have been working with us on this industrial development project. We've been permitted for these three structures here in a row. Just for everyone's information, the dry kiln facility is nearly operational. The planer mill facility is 95% complete. And then we'll be moving on to equipment setup. So that's all nice. Shavings, building is under construction. And the loading area is under construction. So the new proposed building is right here. And it'll be eight feet in total longer, four on each end. That is intended for dry storage. So it's no heat, no occupancy, other than occasional employee coming to go into the forklift. Basically takes place in another building further down the site. So as the lumber's processed in the kiln and dried, it needs to stay dry. Can't sit outdoors anymore. So it'll slide into this building. And then when we need it, it goes through the planning facility, back into the other end of this building, and then off to the customer or area of the range or so. Truly a cross dock. The lumber's moving all the time in, in packages. So that's kind of the whole overview of the site condition. So if everything goes well, we expect to get cement in the ground this fall. That's what our target is. That's an overview. We can move into the meat and potatoes as you would like to.
Any questions from the board?
No.
On the application?
Well, you mentioned it's going to replace another building. Is that other building going to be demolished or is it just?
No, it's in the, it's in the traditional footprint of a retail store. So this, this building actually is not quite sufficient for the volume.
Okay.
But it's adjacent to the new facility. And so instead of trucking back and forth and
Right.
You know, and damages and costs, we opted to put another building up, so.
Thank you.
At this time, it's not slated for any changes.
Yep.
As an engineer, I can appreciate the adding of the building. It's going to save a lot of money. So, perfect. So going forward, tonight, we're going to be looking at all the materials of the application and making, and deeming the application complete. You guys, this is not your first rodeo. This is your, your third rodeo maybe, I think. And so in two weeks, we'll come back to complete the whole process of the application. And in between now and then, we'll be informing the boarders that the application is complete. They're, they're welcome to come and check it out and review it at their leisure. I don't think we have happened in the previous three applications, but you never know. So with that said, we're going to proceed with the checking the completeness of the application. Right? So this is the, just for the audience, this is Belgrade Commercial Development Review Ordinance application submission checklist. And we're going to go through it. The first portion of the checklist is the applicant name, and that's Hammond Lumber. And the development name is for a dry storage warehouse. We will start with the first line in the checklist is the application form, and that's complete.
The only thing I would note is, not now, but once we get to the approval stage, the original need to be signed because it isn't currently.
Okay, so.
The original.
You did sign it.
You did sign the original?
Well, okay.
Maybe when you got your copy, you was not signing. So can we deem that complete then?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So applicant agent authorization letter.
That's not it.
Right? Copy of the option sales agreement, lease or documentation of title, right, or, or interest.
Got the D there.
Right, complete. Written waiver request.
It's not a.
Any, yeah. Copy of tax map property. Complete.
Yeah.
Copy of cannabis company soil map of property.
Yeah.
Complete. Copy of USGS topographic map showing property location. Complete. Copy of Belgrade shoreline sun, sunny map showing property location. Complete. Copy of flood insurance map showing property.
Yeah.
Complete. Copy of national wetlands inventory map showing property.
Yeah.
Complete. Copy of map of main, I'm sorry, copy of main geological survey significant sand and ground aquifer map showing property location.
That's not it.
NA. Copy of main drinking water program map of public drinking water supplies showing property location. That's NA?
Yes.
NA. Copy of NDOT highway entrance or access permit.
NA.
NA. Copy of NDOT traffic movement permit or traffic movement study. NA. Copy of other required state or local permits. NA.
And structure's not in the shoreline zone, right?
No, it's almost 600 feet away.
Okay.
It's probably as far as you can get. Because you know, you get closer to it three ways.
Right, right. So that's complete.
Okay. 124 by 30 size site development plan. Drawn to scale showing a minimum. All the following details are there. And that's complete. Detail to scale drawings, or wait a second. To that drawing, we're going, it's complete, but we're going to, we're going to have revision to it.
I'm going to give you a new site plan showing the building.
Four or eight feet on each side.
Okay, so I will, I will note that here.
In your file. It's okay.
All right. That will be conditional, I thought.
Well, it will need to be if we get a revised plan. That's what may be approved versus the current.
It's okay if we send it in like maybe tomorrow?
Maybe five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, absolutely. Just like Hans says, just so we have it before the next meeting where we actually take a vote on the application.
That's right. This is not the application. This is just a checklist. A checklist here. Okay, it sounds good. So detail to scale drawings showing location and construction specifications and drainage features, roads, sidewalks, access points, driveways, parking, traffic control features, fire control structure, and public improvements. That's complete. Documentation meets applicable state federal air quality regulatory requirements. Yep.
Addressed in the application.
Okay, complete. Soil erosion control plan.
It's complete.
Complete. NDP certified contractual name and number. So we got the number today?
Of the contractor?
Yes.
Yeah. 977, P L lining.
977.
That's his number.
Okay.
Of the DP certificate.
Perfect.
If you, in addition, just email that to Hans. That'd be great. And that'll, you'll just incorporate it into the main application file. So we can say that's complete.
Locational site structure listed on National Register of Historic Places. Yep.
NA.
NA. Location of ME Mechanical, I'm sorry, ME Historical Preservation Commission Archaeological Sites, NA. And all of them. Information needed to meet air quality standards.
That's identified. So that's complete.
That's complete. Information needed to meet access to public street standard.
That's complete as well. It's addressed in the application.
Complete. Protection measures for historic and archaeological resources. That's NA. Estimated quantities of flammable, combustible, and hazardous substances to be stored, handled, generated, included waste oil and antifreeze.
It's NA because you're arguing.
NA. Evidence meets NDP citing regulations for oil storage and hazardous substance facilities. NA. Copy of application provided to fire chief by planning board or CEO. So.
That's our responsibility. Something we need to do, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know about Hans.
I think they haven't signed something or I think.
He's already done something.
I think he came in with Andrew.
Okay.
The other guy.
We'll revisit that at the end. Other information needed to meet material storage standard, including bulk storage of combustible and flammable materials and hazardous substances. NA. Visual impact assessment. NA. Plan based on IF and W critical areas program recommendations to mitigate impact on natural areas and wildlife habitat, including deer wintering.
NA.
NA. Other information needed to meet natural resource protection standards. NA. If war requiring post-development noise monitoring or reporting plan, if not required, marked not applicable. So it's not applicable. Information needed to, to meet noise standard. Not applicable.
It's actually addressed in the application, so I would say it's complete.
What problem is that? Both of them or just the second one?
Just the second.
Thank you. Exterior lighting plan and specifications for lighting fixtures.
That's complete.
Complete.
Yeah.
Is war requiring post-development light monitoring and reporting plan?
That's a.
That will be NA. I didn't want to commit the same mistake that I did before. Information to meet parking standard, Article 6, Section 9.
If there's any parking associated, yeah.
That's NA. Written statement from fire chief or capacity of fire department to provide adequate protection.
And then.
That will be the same letter.
Yeah, we'll have to ask Hans about that when it gets in.
Written statement from sheriff department approving any proposed security measures. That will be NA. Other information to meet public safety and emergency services standard. NA. Information to meet screen, screening of structures, parking lots, and other residential uses standard.
That's complete.
Complete. To scale profile view of proposed signs.
NA.
NA. Other information to meet science standards. NA. Storm water management plan. Complete. Other information to meet storm water management standard.
NA.
NA. Surface waste disposal site evaluation form.
I believe that's NA because there's no new, no.
No new development.
Yeah, right, right.
No bathrooms, anything like that.
No bathrooms, no.
NA.
Just lights.
Other information to meet waste standards, Article 6, Section 14, NA. Groundwater quality and quality impact assessment.
So there.
NA. Copy of the restrictions related to drinking water or groundwater protection. NA. Copy of main drinking water program public water supply approval and source of water protection plan. NA. Copy of NDP storm water management permit. That's complete. Cross-source export control method. Complete. Other information to meet water quality standards, Article 6, 15.
Simple, not applicable.
Not applicable. Thank you. Supplemental site plan requirements for mineral extraction operations. NA.
And everything else is NA.
It's NA, yes. So what I will really just for the pulley. I'll be very quick. Five years mining reclaim plan, mineral extraction processing operation procedure and hours. Hydro geological study of groundwater movement and quality, written extraction and process buffer agreement with the border. Reclaim plan for extraction and processing operations, design operation details of stationary petroleum storage and equipment fueling. Other information to meet mineral extraction and processing operation standards. Information to meet overnight accommodation standards. Visual impact assessment of telecommunications tower if located on lake shore or hill top. Main registered professional engineer certification of telecommunications tower design. Other information to meet telecommunications tower standards. Visual impact assessment of wind turbine taller than 100 feet. Impact study of wind turbine or wildlife. Identification of roads to be used for turbine transportation. Hiring of engineer by town at applications expense to document road conditions prior to use and damage of use. And, and then emergency response plan during equipment transport. Turbine general liability certificate of insurance. All those are not applicable. So we're kind of waiting to see if we have that letter from the chief.
Let me go see if I can find it.
I'll be nice. Thank you so much. And.
We do not have a letter.
Okay. So that, but that's on, on the planning board. So I think I will deem this application complete. Just missing the chief lever. The entire chief lever, right? So it will be okay for me to sign it tonight and in those documents and the upgrade on the drawings. And we should be good. So the first part of the process is, is done. Now your pen is.
We still need the board on this.
We need to go on this. Okay, so I wanted to motion to approve and deem this application complete.
I would make a motion to approve the application's complete. Any the now providing the application to the fire chief and a written statement from the fire chief's on their ability to meet the fire protection needs.
Thank you.
Do we have to say anything about the larger building or is that?
You joined too, yes.
Oh, yeah, and a revised site plan showing the expanded building.
All right. And I hear a second from Mr. Alexander. So now we're ready to vote. Mr. Baker. Mr. Surgeon.
Yeah.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And myself, Sarah Langgett, I voted yes too. So it's five in favor, no opposed. And we need the application complete. All right, done.
Thank you.
We get on the floor dinner ready now.
I'm waiting.
Oh, this goes back to Hans.
You can have that one. I'm going to take this one. Thank you.
Thank you very well. I have also record. Wonder if I may?
Yeah.
So continuing with the new business, yes, we have a second application in the dock. The applicant is Julie Owensburg and the location is 714 Fourth Point Road, MAP 16, Lot 2. And the purpose is this is shoreline zone and it's the same use, reconstruction of the old camp. I will make I will declare in, in the proceedings that I do know Mrs. Owensburg. We're social friends. So in the voting process to approve the application, I will get myself out of there. All right.
Fair enough.
So that said, I will open the floor for the applicant to give us a quick introduction of all.
So my name is Ben Seacrest. I had the pleasure of building Julie's and Eric's time. And at that time, it was your husband's house and Moon Cove, about 30 years ago, believe it or not. Okay? And so we go back quite a bit. And anyway, so I lights carried on and she invited me to be involved, basically like a construction coordinator, whatever. Okay? Because she's going to be gone a lot later. She's had her mom's 94th birthday today. That's oh, California. So that's where she is. So she, anyway, she's a good friend and whatnot. And she asked if I would participate. And this is one of the things. So I've got the application. Actually, the application for the permit. I've got a lot of those, the other information. And I kind of went through and did my thing just because I, who I am, just did my math and it all seemed to line up and looks correct in my mind from everything I've seen. And I think she's very grateful that Hans was involved early on to help, you know, kind of guide the thing to get the numbers and whatnot to make sure that they're through her design process and to give you the path. So from that, I think if I got it right, there was I think that they had, the last time she came in, that there may have been like a site plan or something like that needed for where the house was in relationship to the, anyway, so I, I'm, I believe we're pretty close to getting the application. So if there's any deficiencies, I want to make sure that I know what they are and we can get that taken care of as quickly as possible because you know, what is it, 6:20 and it's dark out there. It's going to be getting darker and the days are getting shorter and colder. So window of opportunity is closing.
So with that, I will open the floor for the board to make questions about the application.
There's a, just a question that we set the system. It's the existing system that's being proposed. It was, it's not a new system.
That is correct. It was new a year ago.
And you knew.
No, a year ago.
Okay.
It's very recent. It was after burn right behind the camp. Yes, it is.
All right, so I guess my, you know, the obvious question here is it's total reconstruction. Do you have to move it back? The greatest practice of sense, you have to know.
Yes.
He does?
She does, yes.
Pardon me?
She does, yes.
She does. Okay, so we got to talk about that. Is, is, what's the greatest practice of sense?
Well, there's a separate grid behind it.
Pardon me?
There's a separate grid behind it.
Okay.
So, so Hans, this is, this is the leach field? It is. Okay. And what is not, let me see, can do a point hat for everybody to kind of finish. There's a relatively low priority, mind the key. Power line run, yes. In the second page, bottom photo, you can see that the power line runs behind it. So you got 15 foot east and off to that.
All right. And then I noticed there's a carriage road thing going through there between the leach field and the building itself with a carriage or anything on it.
Yes, under the easement. It's kind of a discontinued thing. The neighbors used to, it's the old road.
Yeah, correct.
But it's still used by neighbors to neighbors as a walk-in path. It is not a travel roadway.
Okay, alright. And this camp we built when? How many years ago?
Nineteen twenties.
Okay, dog is it?
I believe it's a non-conforming lot of records and a non-conforming structure.
So I um I'm not quite um. Familiar with all uh this gas of the septic tanks and whatnot. So it so the septic, there wasn't a new septic system put in a year ago?
Probably closer to two years by now, but it's very recent.
So that means that the leach field is completely new too.
I have a question on the hike. Is the hike gonna stay the same or?
Same, same. It might be common. It's the same or less.
That was my understanding. The architect knew the parameters for it.
And according to the uh. Profile we have, it's uh the maximum height is nineteen feet, ten and sixteen inch. This is a flat roof frame.
Yeah, basically flat. That's why I said basically flat. It's not totally. It's less than a two on twelve. I can tell you that. It's relatively flat, but it does have some. It's actually a rubber membrane. Okay, so same same idea. So with the rubber membrane will have like a uh you know metal feature around it and whatnot. But so it's uh like a Carlisle type. If you see it. A lot on uh well, commercial structures. But on any residential structure, you'll see it a lot, like if you have a flat roof because it's just so reliable. Oh, yeah, it's good stuff.
So steel and steel.
The problem with steel is too, again, on a low pitch like that. Okay, it doesn't really like it. I mean, a lot of the, like, if you're below a three on twelve, even with the steel pitch, you've got it. Potential problem of backup. So the thing is nice about a Carlisle roof, essentially it's monolithic by the time they get done with it. Okay, and there's also some opportunity uh beneath that between the the rubber and the roof to put uh. Like some rigid foam in there too that can create all that items and so forth. It's yeah, it's kind of a neat, it's a neat setup. And if if God forbid, let's say if a limb comes down and pokes it or whatever, you can also patch it. And so the the deal is it's an EPDM rubber. So when you do that and by the time you you clean it up and whatnot effectively, it's not just a surface bond. But the chemical bond.
So Hans, I I'd like to explore Pete's question about. Uh whether this can be moved back more than the couple of feet that's proposed. Uh and the leach fields behind it. Um between the leach field and the uh existing camp, there's a slope there. Then there's another area that's on the site plan marked as open area. And is that where this right of way is that you were discussing earlier?
Yes. And the septic tank. Well, it's a tank is. That can be, it's gonna have to change. Mr. Seacrest.
I'm sorry, were you? I didn't realize you were asking a question. Yeah, as far as I know, the septic tank is under that existing guy.
Cannot be under the new day. It's a state rule about no building on or over septic system. Needs to be accessible.
I guess probably when this was septic tank was put in. It probably was before the rules that required a separate that to be seven feet from the building.
I'm not sure if this was replaced. Set the tank. Or, you know, who was the original and they built the deck over it. I think the deck. Probably happened after the house.
So this wasn't part of what was approved in last year.
What do you mean last year?
As like you said earlier, that the uh septic system had been installed a year ago.
The new field.
New field, just.
I don't know. It was just before I came, so.
Okay.
I didn't approve the plans. Um I thought I had them attached here, but. They're not here. But regardless of the tank.
Of the holy, or the holy thing has to be moved or something or what?
She wants the deck, the tank moves.
Okay.
If she wants the deck where the tank is, it moves. Exactly.
So if 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 you had to move it, where it's within.
Carriage way or whatever you want to call it. Under the utility right of way.
But we have to go and uh. You know, work out the the exact location to do that. The that uh right away in the back, you know, again, just kind of worried about, you know, I'm just thinking that. Moving it back, free back into that, if it doesn't go, but all it's doing is walking over it anyway. That should not, I can't imagine that's a problem. And because that's uphill, I've got to think that's a pump station in that tank too. So so really. In my mind, it seems like that would be a good thing to put into that space. Why not?
You're right, we'll have to visit, just take a walk. If the power company needs to run a truck through there.
Well, let's see. So if that's the case, then too, perhaps you could move it back. And then over because there's more space. Move it beyond where that deck is, you know, kind of parallel to where it is, but move it back and then move it over. Something like that. Yeah, that's a good point. If the power company has to go through that.
That is that just. Uh that power line is, that just goes to that camp though. That's just a service drop, right?
No, it runs through. It looks like it runs through.
Okay, because it looks like it comes off of the.
The architect sent a little bit of liberty with.
Oh, okay, thank you. A little bit of that.
Thinking of a little bit of liberty, do you know whether in front of the camp on the uh. The site plan are four tree-like. Drawings or so, as if the plan is to plant. Trees in front of the camp. Do you know if that is the plan?
I believe that's just supposed to be in general what is there. Okay, that's it. I mean, the objective, to my knowledge, is no, they're not trying to plant any trees on there, but they're trying to leave whatever is currently there in place.
Yeah, they would have to.
Yeah, yeah, right on, yeah.
Yeah, it's been it's been like that for years. I'm familiar with the area. Been this way it is. Thirty years.
That's that's my understanding.
The only other thing other than uh the where the new location will be for the septic tank that I think the application is missing. Will need a a letter from um the owner authorized mute of representative.
Do you think it's there? At least it's.
I didn't see it.
It's an email. It's like this. Basically, it's uh.
Look, it's the last page on this. The uh the application, I have four pages stapled together.
I am having my construction manager Ben Seacrest represent me at the meeting on the third.
Okay, that's fine. It's just not in the copy that I got. I I printed mine at home, so maybe it just didn't print.
Yeah, it was not emailed. It was in my email.
Oh.
And I may put back it out. She was planning to come and then she switched her lines um up to refer.
Alright, that accounts for it. Thank you.
She hasn't decided who's gonna do it yet. She's waiting for this approval.
But then at that point, you do need the for the earth's work to certify kind of thing.
No, we can make a condition of approval that you do present it before destruction.
Yeah, and that's the certified, yeah.
It's pretty hard. I mean, you don't even know if you can build it. It's not, you know, unless you have a regular subcontractor.
Right, oh, I totally guess.
It's pretty hard, you know.
Sometimes the contractor is who represents the applicant and then then people know that. And their and their contractor certified.
So I hear that we need to understand where the septic tank is gonna be located. And I hear that we we're gonna place as a condition of a pool, the low-end contractor and uh. Uh number before they start working. Did I hear that we need to do a visit, a side visit?
I don't think so. None. I mean, Hans asked my question, so. And he's apparently been there.
Be my question too initially.
So we we are we are okay with the um. Most likely the extent of of its location.
Based on the information we've.
And looking at your pictures here, I mean, the drawing's a little deceiving. If you look at your pictures, I mean, it's right behind, you're gonna have to fit something in there. Uh that's the end of your berm of the septic. So. You can't approach into that, so I'm fine with that, yeah. Um and I think we can also keep things moving along. Can we also use the placement of uh put a condition on the placement of the septic tank?
I I think so. Just have it, you know, uh submitted and approved by the local plumbing inspector partners construction.
So.
At least it's okay with me.
So I hear that we do it, we're ready to do a. Find the fact facts and condition of law.
We have to deem the application complete or not?
No, I don't think so.
Not in the same sense.
It's in a different file.
Um not in the same sense that we have to with that the ordinance requires it. Like in the commercial development review ordinance. I mean, obviously, it has to be. Complete enough so that we can act on it, but. At least that I'm not aware of us having to do a a separate vote on completeness.
It always threw me off with the commercial development.
Yeah, I'd say if it's not substantially complete, we probably shouldn't be voting on it.
I feel like it's complete, but I did find this as a photo from two thousand eleven. And we the condition of the pool should include. And tree. Well, Miss Owensburg purchased the property. In the absence of these trees. In the past. Ten years, these are the most borrowed this period.
Was it a storm?
There's no telling, but still. The ordinance reads even hazard trees, storm damaged trees, they all get replaced. So right now there's shrubbery out there. In the midst of that shrubbery, there should be. A pine tree.
Okay, it it has to be a pine tree or some other kind of tree?
Species.
Native species. And that's like, okay, so it could be a brick tree.
Yeah, or you know, or whatever. She doesn't want to concur.
Right now maples are the species that are not under attack by some sort of. Caterpillar or whatever, so.
What 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 about a fruit tree? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, they don't. I'm pretty sure we've been educated. Our fruit trees don't.
Didn't know that. Can we do that uh I mean, in in a way that this is an enforcement action? Can we in our permit?
As a condition.
Condition.
So you're saying it's an enforcement act, but it was never enforced, so we go back and what's it not?
I think we can.
All the stumps are there. There's evidence that these trees were there. But there's no replacement tree.
Oh, yeah, you see him in the photo.
When you buy a property, you buy the violations that go with it too.
Okay.
So while I'm not, this isn't a punitive action, this is a condition that she, once she's done. Plants trees.
Okay.
Because the vegetation, when they do the the demo. All the vegetation around her is gonna get destroyed. So I'd imagine she likes a nice. Nice surrounding. She's gonna have some planting, but we should say that a tree.
Okay.
Or two.
Okay, alright, and the tree would go in front of the. In the front off the side of what? Where where to go?
Spray it on across the front or either at the, it could be the approximate locations that the trees were at.
Within ten feet of the stone, a stone.
Okay.
Usually is the the rule that I give is within ten feet because, you know, you can't dig right on top of it unless it's a tunnel. Pick one down the middle, but. The shoreline, you know, absence of new root systems is gonna disappear. And that's not, she, you know, won't be doing her any favors.
Right.
By not. Making a condition.
You have like uh. Size of what you're planting, something what greater than three feet. Three, yeah, that would be, that would be a good thing. I serve on the Manchester planning board, so I get it, okay? And you want to be, you want to be very specific in what you want. That makes perfect sense. Everybody knows, no surprises.
So what are gonna affect our number? Three?
I would say one within ten feet of each remaining stone.
Which is how many stumps are there?
Why?
Well, some of them. I would say three, at least three, but you know, I can survey the stones.
So. We could do that by condition as well, potentially by saying something like provide written plans for planning. Those three native uh tree seedlings at least three feet tall to the CEO part to start construction.
Right, the thing that's nice about that is then it gives them flexibility in terms of when they need to be planted. You follow me? Not be the best time to do it, right?
No, it isn't the best time to do it, or not when you're gonna be working. Or yeah, or for part occupation.
Alright. So we're ready for the.
If you were gonna do that, in my planning board ad, seems to me that you would also want to have that in. As far as.
as far as condition going forward, they have to be maintained. Okay, like if one dies, what are you gonna replace it?
Um, in my experience, it's, uh, three to five years.
But it's in the ordinance. They have to survive for five years.
Five years.
Or be replanted.
Fair enough.
I don't have my words with me. You know, where is, I know section fifteen, I think it's O or R.
Oh, no, it might be R.
But I think that's pretty much what it says.
Yeah, in accordance with your decision. Yeah, so let's cite the Hazard Store Damage Dead Tree Removable. Uh, page forty-eight, it'll be section fifteen subsection P. And P is involved.
Now, we should add that to the to the, you know, writing over there, we supplicate, we'll check it.
There's this photo, two thousand eleven, those are big trees, you gotta assume they were.
Where'd you get this picture from?
Let's see, Chris, that.
Oh, it was in the file, well, exactly.
You can see on page fifty-five, it says survival of planted woody vegetation and vegetation under three feet in height must be sufficient to remain in compliance with the standards contained within this chapter for a minimum of five years.
Okay. So what's that under?
It's under fifteen, or planting of vegetation.
R E? All right, section fifteen, R E.
All right.
Fifteen, on page fifty-five.
Any other concerns? So we're ready for the, uh, findings of facts and conclusions of law? Alright. But these are good news. We're way close to the permit.
This is the exciting part.
So this kind, this, you're, uh, I guess you're familiar with this. This part is boring. It's gonna take probably ten minutes or so, just bear with us.
What kind of takes? I enjoyed watching Hammond London put me right back in the plan board. I, I'm currently on the appeals board, but yeah.
Alright.
That's a great, great job. I do have one other question. Did you use the word for D E P or do you?
I did.
That guy is an icon right there.
Were you on the planning board?
Oh, man, Richard Baker, Rich Baker, you were cited more times. I mean, that's the expert right there.
Alright. Manchester, maybe he'll go on the plan.
Well, there you go, there you go. They always need good people.
Alright, so we're gonna go through the findings of fact and conclusions of law. This is for the applicant, uh, for Julie Omsberg. Uh, the address is seven fourteen Horse Point Road, map sixteen, lot two. Findings of fact. The applicant on date applied for the shoreline permit for ten, uh, October third twenty, twenty twenty-four for the same use of and reconstruction of all camp, which is the project. This application was presented to the planning board on October third, twenty twenty-four today. These findings of fact and conclusions law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the permanent application. Conclusions of law based upon application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted to it. The above findings of fact, the Belgrade Planning Board finds that the project is permitted which is, uh, uh, principal structure use, fifteen A one. On the section fourteen table one in the ordinance and further makes following conclusions based on applicable provisions on section sixteen D of the ordinance. Will, so we're gonna start voting here on the different items. So will maintain safe and healthy conditions. The board found the standard was met based on public records. And submissions. So we're gonna call that from now on B R A S. So we're gonna vote on that. Mister Baker.
What's your name?
Yes, Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And me, I'm gonna abstain, so it's four in favor. One abstain, zero opposed. And one abstained. Will not result in water pollution, erosion, sedimentation to surface waters. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
This is Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. So I and me, I abstain, so it's one, uh, four in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention. Will adequately provide for the disposal of all water, uh, wastewater. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
And to Sergeant.
Yeah.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And I'm gonna be abstaining, so it's four in favor, one abstain, zero opposed. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning ground fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Mister Langgett, I am abstaining, so it's four in favor, one abstain, zero opposed. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual point of access to inland waters. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mister Alexander. Myself, I'm gonna abstain, so it's four in favor, one abstain, zero opposed. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in, uh, comprehensive plan. With the board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Mister Langgett, I'm gonna be abstaining, so it's four in favor, one abstain, zero opposed. Will avoid problems associated with flood plains development and use. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yeah.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And me, myself, is, uh, I'm abstaining, so it's four in favor, one abstain, zero opposed. In accordance with provisions of section fifteen land use, the board found the standard was meant based on evidence on record and the following. So we're gonna read each one of them and know which ones are applicable before voting on this, uh, section. So minimum lot size. A, that's applicable. Principal accessory structures.
Yes.
It's applicable. Campgrounds, N A. Individual pa- private campsites.
No.
N A. Commercial and industrial uses, N A. Parking areas, N A. Roads and driveways, N A. Signs, N A. Stormwater runoff.
Yes.
Applicable. Septic waste disposal system, applicable. Essential services, N A. Mineral exploration and extraction. You got gold there?
I hope so.
So that might be applicable then. So N A, the real thing, N A. Agriculture, N A. Timber harvesting and land management roads, N A. Clearing or removal vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
Say yes in this case, because it's, what we're having for a condition is related to that.
Okay. Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and then re- tree removal. N A. Exceptional to clearing and vegetation removal requirements. N A? Okay. Revegetation requirements, that's applicable.
Yeah, yeah.
Erosion and sedimentation control.
Yes.
That's applicable. Shoreline stabilization. That's applicable.
I don't think so. It's no alteration to the shoreline being proposed.
Okay. The trees are so close to the old bed that the, the trees that are gonna have to be replanted.
Yeah.
Are so close to the shoreline.
Yeah, if they're dug by hand, I don't think it's an issue. You go in with a backhoe, it may be ten holes, I'd say, maybe.
I think that more applies.
Soils.
Borderline soils.
Typically, that's the one requirement that applies that directly is if soil test pit and soil work was done for some subsurface wastewater, and in this case, that's not it's already been done, so it's not really applicable for this application.
Water quality.
Yes.
Historical and chronological sites, N A. Resource protection, N A. Alright, so now we're gonna vote on, on this item altogether. The board found that this standard was met based on evidence in the record and minimal lot size, principal accessory structures, stormwater runoff, septic waste disposal system, clear, clearing and or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting, revegetation requirements, erosion and sedimentation control, and water quality. Okay, so we're gonna vote now. So Mister Baker. Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Mister Langgett, so who's one abstain, I'm gonna be abstaining, five in favor and zero opposed. I'm sorry, four in favor. Thank you. Conditions of approval needed to meet required Belgrade Shoreland Zone ordinance findings in section sixteen D. We always require the managed stormwater runoff from new and expanding structures in accordance with section fifteen I of Belgrade Zone Shoreland Zone ordinance and the main, uh, D E P best management practices. You're familiar with that, right? So that's, that's one approval, condition, condition of approval. The, uh, second one will be the second one here doesn't apply.
It does apply.
Oh, actually, I take that back. So for all construction, this is the second condition of approval. For all construction projects located within the hundred, uh, hori- horizontal field of the normal high water line of a great pond or seventy-five feet from the wetland or water, uh, other water body and located in the wood vegetation, the project shall comply with clearing and vegetation removal performance standards fifteen O two of the ordinance. These are include protection of existing vegetation on, under three feet in height, grounds covered plants, and leaf litter and duff layer which make up the forest floor. The covering or framing of the forest floor with project excavation material or other field will not specifically include in the permanent application and approved by the planning board or, or CEO is prohibited. Incidental damage of vegetation and the forest floor during a, uh, proof construction shall be revegetated in accordance with requirements in section fifteen R five.
Was it five? I know it's fifteen R. Yes, yes, it is. Fifteen R five.
Yeah. And, and six prior to the quiddity or use of permitted, uh, structure. The code of formers shall be informed of completion of the planting of wood vegetation and restoration of forest floor. This condition of approval does not apply to project approved and located in the resource uh, protection zone where different ordinance requirements apply. So this will apply to the vegetation that they will damage during construction. But these requirements that we're asking for are uh, the tree prior to construction.
Uh, well, the planting of the trees is above and beyond that condition.
Okay, so that will be a second?
That condition, just for your benefit, is to address issues we've had in the past where the, uh, spoil material from the excavation gets spread around and turned into a lawn, it was burnt, uh, you know, rough ground and, uh, and, or poss- possibly forest soils, uh, forest duff layer. That's what that condition is about, is returning it to that, even if it means just putting, uh, mulch on it or something of that nature.
So, um, so we decided to start again our E, but as a different condition. The stomps, is that?
Yep, so do you want me to read these?
That'd be nice.
And I can give these some lines, uh, if people agree to them. Uh, so there are three additional site-specific conditions that we've been discussing and hopefully I've got the wording somewhat right. Uh, first would be new location for, for, uh, septic tank shall be provided and approved by the local plumbing inspector prior to the start of construction. Uh, number two would be the name and number of the D E P, uh, certified excavation contractor is to be provided to the CEO prior to the start of construction. Uh, and number three would be to plant, maintain three native tree seedlings at least three feet tall between the structure and lake shore prior to the occupation of the proposed dwelling in accordance with section, section fifteen R of the ordinance.
I sound like those, I'll write them down. So we all are agreeing with that?
And that was prior occupancy.
Occupancy, yeah, right, so. It's in that works in terms of yeah, the pipeline.
Yeah, I would thank you.
For that whole, wow, either next spring or next summer.
Right on. So that, I liked first, I forgets.
So that, I like first, I forgets. Well done, because then it's right in front of you. It needs to be done before you can get in. I like that. Yeah.
So I just did one question of. On fifteen R, revegetation required, right? That goes like the one. Two, for one and a half pages, like two pages. Right? And, but actually three pages. For which particular? One in fifteen.
Except R five.
Not all five?
Yep.
Okay.
So, that probably should be changed, sir.
Okay.
It is R five E specifically.
Five was.
R five. Section fifty R five.
I mean, it's, you want the whole. Section of ordinance to apply, but specifically. E is the five year.
Survival, you know. And that talks about the native trees and that as well.
Yeah, yeah, you want all of R five. Not just. So, not just for five E then.
No, just.
Leave it the way it was.
Good, okay.
So, so. On that condition being met, the applicant would. It would meet with the code enforcement officer and figure out. With a, with a plan. And. And the code off, code enforcement office going to approve the plan we've been revegetation. E to the general happen.
Right, and my question is, is that, does the, does the plan happen before the permit is issued and before the strategic occupancy happens? It's carried out? Or if you follow me the timing, just like right now, does it make better? So you get the stump there, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's the thing, we gotta get out there before they're planted and agree on. It's going within ten be those stops. It said three, but I also heard you say it might be four stops. It might actually be four, whatever it is. You got some major stumps out there and you can see it.
I mean, I, I didn't write it that way. With submission of a plan, I, I thought it was simple enough that it could be addressed between. You and Ponce. Yeah, he said three between the house and the.
You, I do, I'm, I'm good on that.
Alright, so. Basically, after the demo, you know, the house is built. We can say, alright. Here we go. Put some stakes in the ground, you know, you know, where she wants us, there's this avenue, but.
Right on. Sounds great. Perfect.
That has to be here. Put in here. That plan.
I don't think so, because we just need like minutes, you know.
Okay.
I think the hook is that you can't move into it till it's done, so that has to happen sometime before you go in.
Yeah, right.
There's self-centering that way. There's a long time when you're.
Right on.
Inside and.
Right on.
Can be done and.
Be rooted.
I, I think that is very smart, that ties it up in a deep package, puts some urgency to it. It doesn't get shuffled underneath. You gotta have it so you move in, period.
Good.
You live in a big song in the building, or you're just kind of coordinating things, but.
So, yeah, I probably, I'll be involved with the whole group of contractors and whatnot, okay? More than likely physically, I'm gonna say at this point, no, I won't, okay, but the way my life works is I'll probably be up there doing part. That's the way it goes, you know, so.
But, project men.
Yeah, exactly.
So, section is fifteen R five.
No, just leave it as R. That's what we ultimately decide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we need other parts of other paragraphs in that section.
Qualify it.
Yeah.
So all that is done. So based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law. Of. October third, twenty twenty-four. The town of Belgrade planning board approved by vote of. Um. And this is a vote to approve the whole application. So our entertaining motion to do so.
Make the motion to approve the application. Of uh. Till the end. Um, with the conditions uh. Listed or brought out during a discussion here.
Five conditions, yeah. I need a second.
A second.
Alright, so we're gonna vote now. Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yeah.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And myself, I'm gonna be abstaining, so as four in favor, none opposed, one abstaining. So vote of four. The shoreline zone permanent application of um. Julie. Armstrong. Where they have all conditions. And at the meeting of ten. Three, twenty twenty-four. Develop uh these written finds of facts and conclusion of law on the Belgrade. Uh, Board of Appeals and adopted with the findings on ten, three, twenty twenty-four. So ten, three, twenty twenty-four. And, I'm, for your blue pen, thank you. I should have a blue pen with me. So this is all complete and congratulations, you got your permit.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Tom.
Well, this is all done here, so now we're getting uh the permit.
Sorry, correct, you called me out.
That's okay.
I thought you said for this, if you know what I mean, for this, that's right, yes.
Oh, yes. Oh, man.
You keep that.
Well, first the secret to get the permit in mail, I got it goes.
Um, tomorrow morning, I'll scan all of it into one document, then email it.
It's a show, I'm gonna need that again.
I'll have hard copies if you want.
But you email, email, good, I'll.
You don't lose.
I'll print off, I'll print off, and well, I love to have my email, then I'm, I'm still a hard copy guy too, I like to have that.
No, the email makes a good long term digital.
Yeah, right on. And you define to.
Yeah.
So, thank, thank you all very much.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Nice to meet you. I appreciate the work you do.
Yeah.
Did you, did you guys have to do like your comprehensive plan work too?
Uh, no, we have a committee.
Yeah, we have a separate committee, yeah.
Well, we got to it.
Yeah.
They asked for our opinion, man.
I was involved in our number one, and that was. Ooh, that was, that was the challenge. That, once you had the first, the second one wasn't so hard, you know, to review and whatnot, but. Boy, oh boy, that first one. I mean, I was thinking they were gonna burn us at the stake a couple times.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, boy, that was bad, yeah. But anyway, thank you all very much.
Davy Cog helped you with your plan? Provide technical assistance.
What the heck was it? Levat was his name.
Oh, so you'd had a consultant?
We had a consultant. He was, he was a really good guy. Yeah, I mean, I, I tell you, that was. That was really thankless thing. And one of the, one of the things that we did in our ordinance, because for years after that, you'd have people come in and they were very adversarial and they would say. This is your ordinance, blah, blah, blah. I'm like, no, 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 no. It's yours, and you just weren't there to vote, right? And so in the front of the book, we said this is our ordinance. It's all of ours. This voted on, this stayed accepted, and this is how you change it. Boom, 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 boom. Right in the front page, it ended all, it's just like, yeah, great. Oh, yeah, anyway, thank you all very much. It was a pleasure to meet you. I couldn't sleep, I'm like, come on.
Sticking around.
Very long time.
Oh, my goodness, very good.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Take care.
Thank you all.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, so we can probably get you back.
Yeah, so um.
We are.
Next. Item. And the uh. Agenda tonight is all business. Is a subdivision checklist. And Hans was able to uh. Get a subdivision checklist. I said that I was gonna tackle this on my own and go over it. I apologize, I couldn't get uh to it. Um, but we have the list right here, the checklist right here. Um. It would take probably five minutes or so to go over it. Individually, and then we can talk about it. It's basically what application has. It just, it's all table up, so it's like easy to check in, yes or no. Make sure that all of it is in there. But there will be sections that we either add or off because the subdivision ordinance is new. Does anybody know why number three will be special? In page five. Twenty-three, why, why that was?
I, I. I, I think that's wrong. Yeah, I mean, the current ordinance requires some. But, I'm just, hundred.
Yeah, so twenty-two should be, should be part of it.
But, uh, I mean, there are a number of things that, um. Or. You know. Have changed since this was done in two thousand and five. Uh. And, um. It's only addresses, if I'm correct, major subdivisions and nothing. It isn't a checklist for major subdivisions. Yeah, it's just slightly different.
Application fees gone upstream and down.
Uh, you know, there, there are some other things too with regard to stormwater management and. And phosphorus control, like number twenty-four and five, you know, that, that's. That's very old information from the original gentleman. Nineteen uh. Eighty-eight. Subdivision ordinance were, at that time, only Samuel Lake and McGrath Pondworth. Having water quality, serious water quality problems. So there, there are things like that that need to be amended, but. I think it's a good starting point.
So you are agreed that probably we can. Review this one and then um. Adding a section for minor subdivisions. So we will. Uh. Take all that for next time. Do a final check. I'll try to get on it early. And email it to everybody. Or you submit it to Hans before he do his packet next time. And then next will be uh. A, a proof of previous minutes. So we have uh. Three seconds minutes, just to, there to. Alright? Right, so I don't think it's back you have to vote in this, this month. Or you can, you can suggest changes if you want to.
Uh.
Which one are we doing first?
We're doing a fifteen first. I'm getting a little confused here. I cannot remember that they were already proposed changes to show some ordinance. Yet from this group, Single Lake and Natural Resource Committee. So. Okay, I think that back, as we were talking about the twenty-five wood that was what that email was about.
The Gmail, they were talking about all kinds of concern stuff.
Yeah, I will say that, I will not say that it was not passed, but I will say that it was not welcomed. But we'll get to that. Now, now it's coming to me, I've been so long.
Which file was it?
That's page, that's page one, page one. We ready? Right, is it sealed?
Yep.
Alright. So we're gonna proceed to approve or consider approving a call of the minutes of A fifteen. Any changes that we want in the first page?
Under new business, the application of Gabriel Jaguerre. Under discussion, I would suggest just eliminating that sort of partial sentence about the abiding property will be twelve feet. I believe it was twelve feet from the property line, but not certain.
To eliminate the whole sentence?
Yeah, I would just.
Okay, eliminate that whole sentence?
No, just the, the one sentence on the second line, that budding property will be twelve feet.
So that will be eliminated, that sentence will be eliminated, okay? Anything else on that page? I will say in that page and going to number two, talking about Sarah's email. The second line underneath said, we show some ordinance that was not, was, was not passed by the planning board members. I will say that the concerns were not welcomed rather than pass. Well, instead of saying was not passed or something, were not welcomed by the planning board members. Then.
I'm not sure welcome is a good word. It makes it, gives the impression to the public or anybody reading this, like, we wouldn't be willing to consider it. We considered it, it's just that we didn't pass it.
Also, should it say, you should stay as it is?
I think so.
Okay.
So I, I don't know how others feel in terms of.
That's, I see, I see Craig, not yes, yeah.
That's what happened.
Asked or approved or something like that.
Okay, so we, we, we leave it at that, we stay as it is, Chelsea. Alright, and then Sarah say that, instead of saying that the group with Hannah, instead of saying that, you should say that the Lake and Nat, Natural Resource Committee. So instead of saying, we say, Sarah and guests stated that to the Lake and Natural Resource Committee that she could not guarantee the topic will be back to the planning board. So instead of saying the group with Hannah, putting Lake and Natural Resource Committee, that that will be group that were here.
That's good, good.
Alright. And page number two, any changes to page number two now?
Yeah, on the old business. Says Sarah asked members of the planning board if it'd be okay to put a proposal, two groups, probably some scientists of the excellent and a present, presentation from Nick Craig on their construction practices. You were asking about a construction company, not one of us.
Yeah. So presentation from current construction, from, from companies on current construction purposes. Okay, so we'll read that third line, read scientists from Seven Lakes and a presentation from companies on current construction practices, practices.
Contractors, I mean, from, companies contractor.
Okay, they did that, so scientists from Seven LA, Seven Lakes Alliance, and a presentation from contractors on current construction practices. Any other changes on that page?
A question, that same old business item regarding a presentation, you know, a seminar presentation by Seven Lakes Alliance and, and others. We just discussed the discussion portion of that, and the decision is vacant, and for the life of me, I can't remember if we made a decision.
Would, the, it was, the decision was yes, actually. And I, I actually ended up putting a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we denied that.
And in the next meeting, when I, I show you guys a proposal, it was turned down.
Well, yeah, okay, alright, I forgot that, so we should put something in.
Decision.
Yeah.
So Sarah will put a proposal.
Yes.
So the decision is to say Sarah will place forward a proposal. Then also on that same page, but that's going to the top, Chelsea. In the top paragraph, in the second line, it says, after some arguments between the group, you say, why would you say after some conversation?
Discussion.
Or discussion.
Yeah.
Then after some discussion between the group. And then in the one, two, three, fourth line, it says, they were wel, they were welcome to give input to be considered at a later time. But instead, in later time, instead, and, instead of saying and, and it should be but not to argue.
I would actually just eliminate.
Usually meaning that?
And not to argue, just eliminate those one, two, three, four words.
Okay.
Were you guys drawing pens around or anything?
I agree on that one. So, so in that fourth line, we're gonna say at a later time at the end of the line, and then erase and not to argue. Completely erase that, thank you. It's my bedtime. So so that, that will be it on that page, third page, any changes? Not for me either. It's a surgeon.
Yes.
Any changes on that, page three?
Fine.
Okay, no changes, okay, and that's it. So I would again motion to approve the minutes of August fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to through minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four as amended.
And Greg, Mr. Shield has the motion and Greg will second it, so we're gonna vote now. Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Shield?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And myself, Sarah, I guess, for your favorite runner post, pass. Alright, so that's done. What about the, you guys have chance to look at that minutes of September fifth? We'll have some time to look at that. Okay, I'm ready?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, page one, any changes on page one of those minutes? I see none, go to page two. Changes page two.
I have a couple. Under item three in new business, like a Sarah email. One, two, three lines down. So it starts, there were some more heated discussions, I don't think we need to, we're heated in there. They look at the ordinance, they look at the tape, they can make up their own minds about how heated.
So, so in the fourth line, the word heated to get out?
Yes.
Okay.
And then in the next line, so that would be one, two, three, fourth line. The discussion, sentences starts with discussions on not having that, that whole sentence. Doesn't really make sense, so I would change it to discussion included not having. So eliminate the S on discussions and eliminate the word on and add the word included, so that this whole sentence reads discussion included not having the time for the planning board to host the clinic due to, et cetera, et cetera.
Alright, any other changes on that page?
Yeah, one other under old business that I have anyway. Number one, list of upcoming tasks, and then first one was subdivision ordinance application. And the second was commercial development or new ordinance. And I, well, there's a little bit more that needs to be added for that to make sense. So I would add, after the call and application form and findings of fact, needs a section for solar farms.
Okay. Any more changes to that? Alright, so we're on page three. Any changes on page three? I have a change in page three, so where it says discussion, it will be one, two, three, four, five, six line, it says do rock need, so it should say, it should read rocks. Do rocks need instead of rock ED, it's just R O C K S. Thank you. And I think that will be it, huh? We're ready to vote? Right, and we won't deny in motion?
Next motion, we approve the minutes of nine, five, twenty-four as amended.
In a second?
I'll second.
So we have a, a motion from Mr. Alexander and a second from Mr. Shield, we're gonna vote now. Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mr. Shield?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Mr. Shield is yes, it's four and three, another post. That's done. The next item in the agenda would be CEO accessory building applications. Be CEO.
Right. So this is more to do with the stiff decision because of our, we do have some upcoming accessory dwelling, our accessory structure applications. But the stiff decision basically negated the shoreline zone definition of residential dwelling unit. It said that omitting it. It said that omitting a kitchen alone does not determine an accessory structure. So the rule that we've been using in the past, the court did not uphold. The court looked at the size of the accessory structure, the use of the accessory structure in comparison to the principal structure. And determine that there was no difference. So what the court or the state wants us to do is still up in the air. But based on this decision, I don't think it's prudent for us to continue making decisions until we know how they want them framed. So I've emailed Colin about how do we handle situations like this, when they have bathrooms, and he says, well, you refer to the definition of bunkhouse, which doesn't have plumbing. But that definition is not in shoreline zone ordinance. That's coming from a subsurface wastewater rules. Also, I replied to Colin, but he has not replied to me. And the definitions of said, some surface wastewater rules, there is a detached bedroom, which does allow plumbing. And its definition, uh, you know, I replied to Colin was, you know, that this other definition exists. And but I want to stay within shoreline zone, the wrong shoreline zone, we start pulling the definition from some surface wastewater and then a definition for land use rules, which definition truly applied to shoreline zone. So based on all this obscurity, I think it's in the best interest of the town that we propose a moratorium on accessory dwelling units within some parameters. Parameters maybe being accessory, not, not dwelling, but accessory structures greater than eight hundred square feet or two thirds the size, greater than two thirds the size of the principal structure. So smaller accessory structures we can address that are truly gonna be accessory structures.
But we still, even when we put that constraint, we had defined previously that accessory structures are are defined by having two of the three conditions to be principal. We still don't have, we don't have a guidance on that. Maybe, maybe we'll have to say that whatever we want to prove, I don't have any other to be, to be on the safe side of it.
Yeah. Well, I said, you know, the, the structure, the new building replicates the pre-existing house. So, you know, they both had three bedrooms, they both had bathrooms, they both had cooking appliances. Even though one was supposed to be a garage.
I, I, uh, I like your idea, uh, but, um, because the court added new dimensions to the definition of accessory structure in not only our ordinance, but also in chapter one thousand D P's, right, shoreline zoning regulations, including that it not be duplicative. Uh, I think we need to maybe approach differently rather than based on size, I, just off the top of my head, I would maybe consider accessory structures that contain, um, bathrooms, kitchens, or, um, or bedrooms. So that we're not eliminating garages and, and sheds and things like that, that I weren't really at the heart of that court decision. Um, I mean, I, I personally think the court's raised more question questions than it answered, I mean, it provides us little to no guidance on what the hell an accessory structure is, and consequently, what a primary structure is, because the way the ordinance in chapter one thousand defines primary structure is, it's not an accessory structure. I mean, it's a dual, um, and, um, so I, I think we need time to work with the town, well, we need time to do probably multiple things. One is last time you spoke to us about this, Hans, you've mentioned that D E P and the attorney general's office was gonna be working on this, and I assume that means they're either proposing, gonna be proposing, I mean, this affects all towns in the state, not just Belgrade, um, and, um, proposing changes to chapter one thousand, or maybe the law and chapter one thousand, uh, to hopefully more clearly define what an accessory structure is, based on this sit, court, law court decision. Uh, uh, and, uh, and I don't know, you know, how much time that will take, you know, whether they can they have to go to legislature, whether they can get that in for next session. If they get it in the next session, how long will it take for D E P to amend chapter one thousand? A year? I don't know. Um, the, um, the, uh, uh, so you know, you're talking eighteen months at a minimum, probably, um. And, you know, what, what do we do in the interim, not only for applications like you're describing, but the court remanded the Joneses at, uh, back to the Board of Appeals, who's supposed to remand, remand it back to us. Well, what the hell do we do when we get the Jones application, unless they do something simple, like, say, approve what we already asked you to approve before, well, we know we can't approve it.
And that's, um, on page ten, the spine printed out on the bottom.
Bottom of where?
Page ten of this step decision. Um.
What's in the first position?
Come up about five seconds, it's in the bottom, in parentheses, it says the word and, and or are convertible as a central statute may require.
Are you in the footnote?
Yeah. So this is the tipping point for me that said, this is not gonna be resolved in a year. And why we need to stop our decisions the way we've been doing. A moratorium gives us time to glean some more information and see which direction the state's gonna go.
Well, a moratorium won't last for long too, so you can only have a moratorium. Their, their moratorium is not gonna take, it's not gonna last as long as what they're gonna take. And my question is, can this whole thing be appealed, or is this the final, final decision?
No, it's fine.
This is the final, because it's from the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
So, and that question, only the legislator in, in the state of Maine can change it.
They can change the law to
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Address this court decision.
Right. But we have to kind of wait for that, we, we're sort of stepping into this, we're gonna wait for that, but all the changes.
Right.
The law, the law, yeah. So we, so we couldn't make any uh, decisions, or like you're suggesting, make it two thirds, whatever, we can't really do that law fully. Is that what?
Well, we'll come back to that in a second, but this statement that they say and, and or are convertible. If they truly were, I disagree with this so much, because why didn't they say and or or?
Doesn't make any sense.
That, that's nonsensical. So to me, this this might be grounds to have this whole decision
thrown.
Thrown out.
Yeah. Maybe, I mean, I, I
Yeah, maybe, you're right.
In, in, in mathematical terms, that's, that's the possible. It's in order to, when you do it theorems, and you say, you have this condition and this condition, you need both to something to happen. If you say you have this condition or this condition, either of the two ways will help you happen. So it's either together to happen, or this one or this one. So when they say that and and or are interchangeable, it's just, it's just really, things you don't know what to do, because we have three options, the sleeping, the cooking, and, uh, uh, toilet, uh, cert, uh.
I must feel like that would put it into the testus.
So, so those two things, either they are together to be a principle, or in to be an accessory structure, one of the three have to miss, be missed. So that's what we had done before, but when you say that, you know, and and or, you know, are interchangeable, then it really is a big loop.
So do we just not accept the applications then, uh, for accessory structures with living space? I mean, or?
Well, I would ask.
So why are we making that decision? Why don't we ask an opinion from a town attorney on which direction that we should take? A lot of us are legal people.
Yeah, no, I, I, well, I agree, I agree, um, the, but I, I, I think we should ask him about, uh, if he doesn't suggest it, you know, the possibility of a moratorium as being part of that. But yeah, I, I, I kind of feel like, um, uh, that would, I'd need more guidance on what the hell this really means.
Right, because I'm
Or we don't, we don't even know that one, because we, we were defining principle structure, having those two things, now it can be either or. Yeah.
Well, uh, just like I said before, the, this court, court decision adds more criteria to bit more vague criteria to the already vague definition of accessory structure. Uh, it must be complimentary and it cannot duplicate. So does that mean a bunkhouse is no longer considered an accessory structure? Because it duplicates the bedrooms or the housing of the principal structure. I mean, it, it, like I said, it, there's so much tipsy. It raises more questions than it answers.
So.
And the court has done us no favors in terms of providing with adequate guidance to be able to implement that, their decision.
In reading that, I gotta read it again close, more closely, but did the fact that, almost appeared that the fact that they built this walkway between the two structures made a difference. Uh, as if they're, almost as if they're, they're now one, one dwelling unit, uh, uh. I, I just, I don't know, if the
Yeah.
Reading the decision, I'm thinking, what did these attorneys argue before the, the judge for them to come out with, uh?
Well, and what application have we had, how many applications have we had where there wasn't a uh, another structure beyond the principal structure, the main camp or house, that wasn't connected to that structure by a walkway?
I mean, don't you want a walkway from your garage to your house?
Well, exactly, you know, I mean, it, it's just nuts. Um, you know, so, or, I mean, the way they interpreted, wh- what they concluded was that makes that part of the primary structure.
Yeah.
That's the way I throw it out.
Doesn't make sense.
Well, it, it doesn't to me either, and, and I, you know.
I get a good, good idea.
Just why, how, how?
My opinion on this in a couple, seven, five, five, you're a couple of poppy days, but, um, the, uh, um, you know, I, as far as I know, absent some kind of violation of federal law, this is it.
Well, get Dan in here, get his opinion.
So, I mean, I agree with Greg, I think as a first step, we need some guidance from the attorney to answer the questions that, that Hans has raised and that we've raised, you know. What do we do next week? We get an application for, for an accessory structure of some sort, you know.
Oh, you've got one.
And, okay, we already got one, there we go, uh, you know, what, what do we do, um, when we get a bunkhouse, uh, what do we do?
Well, we get a primary structure itself.
No, I, I, I think step one, what we do while we're waiting is maybe adopt these subsurface wastewater definitions into our ordinance. So that we have an encompassing state definition to, to roll back on.
And first remember, what's that definition of bunkhouse?
That would be, uh, living quarters without plumbing, you know. So.
Okay.
But the detached bedroom is a structure detached with plumbing and sleeping facilities. So that might get us some.
See, uh, I mean, you know, this all started with us trying to avoid a situation, be- because most of these proposals are on smaller lots. Um, you know, the con, whole concept that we came up with of having a, a condition of approval that excluded uh, having a kitchen in, in that second stru- uh, structure was not really, wasn't had anything to do with, and the court kind of took us to task for this, uh, whether it was an accessory or primary structure, it had to do to ensure that we didn't have a second residential dwelling on that lot, and consequently needed twice the lot size. And, and, you know, I, and I think most of us assumed that if we did that, it also happened to meet the definition of accessory structure. And the court said, no, it doesn't. Um, and, uh, and so um, if we, you know, I, 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 I think your suggestion is well worth considering, uh, the thing is, uh, even that will take time, you know.
It gets us down the road, it gives us an out to not accept the applications, what do we do? What do we tell people? I gotta get next week or next meeting, if you're gonna have a garage existing, it wants to convert it to a living space with plumbing. It's got a subject design made that always ducks in a row. How are we gonna determine that?
I don't know.
And if we don't have a moratorium, we're gonna have these applications coming, and I have no excuse to say no.
We just can't throw a moratorium on there, and I'm not willing to just adopt uh, definitions without, first thing we need is, we need guidance from the town attorney.
And you can go to the town attorney and say, what, what do we do?
Yeah, because if we get that, I'm not willing to move forward in anything.
Now, that thing must be fairly widely known among the legal and
It is.
You said you talked to D E P too.
I was at a training a couple of weeks ago, and some lady, Colin was there giving the training. This lady was from uh, other side of Bangor, she asked her, she, oh, you're from Belgrade, what do you think of this decision?
Yeah.
So it's being read statewide. I don't know how, I don't get alerts on the court decision, but it's been discussed. And I don't know who you know, but I need better answers out of Colin's office. Because they're operating nothing.
I don't know.
They don't know.
He told me to look at the bunkhouse definition, well, if I'm gonna look at that definition, I have to look at all the other definitions that are included in that document.
Yeah.
And bunkhouse isn't a cure all.
Well, that was, that's great.
Go ahead, Lauren.
I, I think, um, you know, until, so I, I agree with Greg, that I think our first step is to invite the town, uh, attorney to meet with us by Zoom or whatever, uh, and to, uh, discuss the questions we have and ask for his guidance on what to do short term and long term. Um, in the interim, you know, if we're, you're already receiving applications for potential accessory structures, or, you know, that may or may not be accessory structures, depending on whatever the court decision set really says. I think the only thing we can say is that, uh, we're, you know, waiting for legal guidance based on, to tell us how to, uh, proceed based on the Supreme Court decision. And at the moment, we don't, you know, they changed the rules on everybody, including us.
This guy's worked all summer.
Maybe we invite the definition of dwelling unit to, uh, anything that has any two of the thirty. I'm, I'm kidding here, but I'm thinking.
Well, you know, and the other
Two, two dwelling units on it.
Not dwell on this, but the other thing is, um, how big is too big for an accessory dwelling? I mean, obviously, the size of the Joneses, Joneses, I mean, that was a good sized structure, there's no question about it. Uh, but, um, they said it was almost the same size as the, the principal structure. Well, it was, I don't remember the, I, I, you know, do back in the envelope calculation, but it's like seventy-five or sixty percent of the size of the, of the original structure by floor.
Okay.
By floor area, they use, the court uses floor area. You know, we've done away with floor.
Doesn't matter to us. So you can't have a big garage. On your property.
Well, you have enough lot size.
Yeah, because you have enough lot size, you can't have a big garage.
I don't know. I don't.
This is government telling us what to do with our land.
It's taking over more home rules.
But I I mean, I.
We're getting a lot of this.
I would I would think that some things should be easy like a wood shed or or tool shed or. Or, you know, a garage, you know.
So size matters because right here it says affirmative board is finding that the plaintiff's garage use was not customary and incidental to the. Primary residence due to the disproportionate physical scale of the garage structure.
Okay, I I'll tell you something. I know that that's what it says there. But I think the big thing here was that. Um. The residents of that law. Initially said it was gonna be a big garage. Only that. But then on the side. They added the bedrooms and the toilet. But the original agreement was to be a big garage. And then we're gonna approve that. And then. All this other stuff is and uh show inside there.
Yeah, but we did ultimately approve that structure as with a garage on the first floor and with bedroom. Uh, well, everything other than a kitchen on the second floor, including a game room and. And uh, you know, and and we did that on the basis of thinking that we were avoiding. Uh, it being a second principal structure by not being uh a dwelling. And apparently we were wrong.
So you've got another application. Pending. Shoreland Zone, not in the bowling lot, the guy wants to put a ninety foot garage.
What are ninety foot?
Yeah. That's what he says. We'll see when the application comes. Uh, he's got a long skinny lot.
Okay, it is. What we're talking about, anyone in the funny, the funny board aware of what's going on regarding this issue? But I'm not saying plenty with the select board, anyone, anyone in the select board aware of what we're we're talking about the issue here? This is the decision that came down from the.
I don't go to select board meetings, I don't know what they're aware of.
I know, so I'm I'm asking that because maybe they wanna be kind of worried.
Does Lorna have a sense of, yeah, so. Um, she's waiting for. Direction from the planning board to talk to the attorney.
That's what we're talking about. She doesn't know what's in our um. She's not.
Yeah.
Not there.
Yeah.
So she's just going by. You know, I'm sure they've had plenty of um. Meetings at select board. Over this.
You sure? Oh, that's not I'm in that. Are you first year? We don't know yet.
Plenty of um, what do you call them at the end of the meetings?
Executive sessions.
Executive sessions.
They've had exceptions about this.
They've had plenty of executive sessions over the last year. There's been quite a few.
Regarding this particular issue?
That's the executive, it's it's whatever it is. So you don't know what, but it's been going on while this has been going on. And when this came out, there was more.
Okay.
Um, so one would have to assume. They're pretty much on it because they don't know if they're gonna, this could be a lawsuit or whatever.
Okay, I disagree with that because I think it's up, it's up to us. We know about it now. At a lower level, we should have made the select board work. We just pushed the envelope, they said, listen, we need some direction, we'd like to talk to you about. Uh, for the select board, where are we gonna go? We're in a, we're in a bind here.
Well, that's what they're waiting for this committee to make. A request.
Okay, all right, so can we make, can this, can this uh, funny board make a request?
We're supposed to vote on this?
No, because we're just talking about asking the town attorney.
So the chairman needs to make a request to the town manager.
But the select board could. Um, maybe use some understanding on how we got to our decision. I mean, they don't, I don't think they know. They don't understand that.
Yeah, I I do think um. If. Uh. The select board hasn't already. Got some information that even if that this is just even an issue from Lorna, I I think it would be smart. Because if she did that, maybe at our recommendation because. Uh, for example, some of these applicants, you know, that are being put on hold could very well. Go to the select board to complain about us. And it'd be good if they heard it from first from us that there's an issue.
Yeah.
Rather than from, um, you know, as a result of some applicant complaining to them.
I think it's a two part thing. We need to get the attorney's. Involvement as to what we do and secondly notify or at least let the select man know that. This whole issue came up and it's not gonna go away real quick.
Yeah.
So uh, uh, that said, what I'm giving is that we all in agreement. That we need to leave all of us. And we all in agreement that the select board should be aware of this issue going on.
Right.
So what I wanna put a letter towards that extent. Or I don't necessarily wanna put the letter where.
Well, I, or just an email.
Email will be enough.
Yeah.
So I will send an email to Lorna. And I copy everybody.
And if she needs more help from us than she can ask.
Well, I I believe your request for short term, long term plan from attorney or MMA is in order to. Yeah, as part of that email.
So, uh. Do, should we? Raise a specific, a specific question for the for the lawyer or should we invite the lawyer to this meeting?
Um, I I'm. Just speaking for myself, um. I'm not sure I'm in a position to know all the right questions to even ask at this point until. You know, I hear more from the attorney in terms of what this decision means. I mean, it may be that I'm interpreting some of this incorrectly. I I mean, I have questions. I I in fact, I have a list of questions that I have, but um, I don't think they're ready for. You know, saying, please answer these questions and then. You know, I'm afraid I'd walk away and have asked the wrong questions. I I would like to hear from the attorney, what does this mean? I mean, I'm sure we're not the only, you know, that that law firm represents a lot of towns. And I'm sure we're not the only ones that have asked them. For guidance.
It's what the D E P was saying all along about two or the three is a dwelling unit and. Uh. It just lies in the face of it. There are every town that's somewhat affected, I think.
Yeah, because I mean, it brings into question the whole definition in uh, chapter one thousand. And uh, of accessory dwellings and. Um, because the courts added. Uh, criteria to that, that's not in in the in the title of the the uh, in chapter one thousand. Uh. Rich, you you must know is. That definition of accessory dwelling unit and and primary. Uh, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling or accessory structure and primary structure, get all my terms mixed up here. Is that is that law as well as chapter one thousand or is that was that something developed in chapter one thousand?
I think it was developed in chapter one thousand. I don't think it's in the statute.
Okay, I wondered about that. So it may be that D E P doesn't even have to go to the legislature.
Uh. Yeah, they they may not. But I I don't.
Anyway, it 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 doesn't matter. I mean.
I can check.
Yeah.
I will check, I will check back with you in the statute and I can love it with you here.
I mean, it certainly would. I know you're um, kind of frustrated with D E P at the moment, Hans, but it certainly would be. Um. Important for them to provide town with guidance on what their timeframe is gonna be. So that we know. You know, how much time do we? Uh, need to basically uh tread water. Um. While this gets sorted out statewide with a longer term, a long term solution, you know.
Richard. When. Shoreland Zone or chapter one thousand is updated.
Mm hmm.
Do they consult with area towns or have public hearings?
Well, I can tell you. There's a public hearing process every time there's. Uh, proposed change to the guidelines because. Rulemaking involves going to out to public opinion, but the original big change to the guidelines back in nineteen. Seventy nine, we went around to like. Six or six or eight. Regions and held public meetings. On the revised guidelines itself, we put a lot of time into into that. But for normal day to day changes, uh, just a lot of times just put out for public comment. And uh. And sometimes it's not a hearing, a lot of times there's not an actual formal hearing.
So where'd they take suggestions from?
Where they get them from? Uh, what would they public notice in the papers? Did you know, you see those things, D E P. Amendment to Shoreland or chapter one thousand or whatever, provide comments to Colin Clark by such as. Such a date and uh. He takes those comments and has to address them. Um. And based on the comments, it may or may not. Change what's being proposed.
Yeah, and no one reads the paper anymore. Yeah, I mean, it's it's, what is the public notification? I mean, how do you know?
Uh, I used to be on D E P emails. I deleted them. But that's that's what I do with that. You know.
So title thirty eight means anything to you, Mr. Baker?
Pardon me?
Title thir- thirty eight? Title? What is it?
That's what it was.
Uh.
That's what it was.
Title thirty eight, chapter.
So I got definitions here, but I'll title twenty two.
No, that's land use.
So I got title thirty A accessory dwelling units. So this might go to push. I'm into that to uh legislation, so title uh. Title thirty eight A municipalities and counties. And then uh, chapter one eighty seven is planning and land use regulation. So statute forty three sixty four B talks about accessory dwelling units. Permitted implement implementation dates, restrictions. Um.
Does it define it?
We're getting close to it. Uh, zoning requirements, general requirements. With respect to accessory accessory dwelling units, municipalities shall comply with the following conditions. A municipality shall exempt an accessory dwelling unit. From any density requirements. Or calculations related to the area in which the accessory unit is constructed. For accessory dwelling unit located within the structure. Within the same structure as a single family. Dwelling unit or attached to or sharing a wall with. A single family hu- dwelling unit.
You're talking about ADUs, we need to be talking about accessory structures.
Yeah, but she it it is that housing law that. Service looking at and.
Is it the housing law we just dealt with?
Yeah, 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 but it doesn't define it.
I think title thirty eight, section four something is where where the uh, shoreline zoning. Is.
I I I think we need to go back to uh. What we were discussing earlier in terms of a path board. I think the first step is to invite the attorney to meet with us. Uh, and tell us, you know, what. They believe is the uh, meaning of this and uh. And then and and how to proceed with the applications are sitting in the pile today. Uh. And uh, and what they think might be a reasonable long term solution. Do we just wait for D E P? Or is there something we can do in the interim or all that kind of good stuff?
Yeah, and I think only the attorney can tell us that to make the right decision.
Yeah, because otherwise, I mean, the worst thing we could do is decide on a course of action, like amendments to the ordinance. And have it be the wrong, wrong amendments. Um, I mean, I do like Hans's idea of uh. Uh, of considering a possible moratorium as a interim solution. If if the long term solution is gonna come from the state. What do we do until they? You know, complete their work and and enact that regulation.
And what would the moratorium be? A ban on or whether a moratorium on accessory structure?
I think so, I think some accessory structures, not all, because we don't wanna be a bit uh, putting, I don't think we wanna be putting them. Um, uh. Ban or or um, moratorium on sheds or or garages or, you know, things like that. I think it's the ones that are. Prove to be problematic in this court case, you know, a building that's intended to house people.
Yeah.
Or have plumbing.
I mean. And half or half plumbing.
Accessory structure that.
Yeah, right.
But I know this guy was gonna build a garage, I don't know, well. He's gonna run a pipe to it. I mean, I know. This is a violation that's gonna happen. I told you, you do it. Your open field where you go in your garage is gonna be a forest because. You're gonna have to tear it down and plant trees. When you get caught.
Yeah. I do like, yes, you know, the asking the attorney to come here rather than us putting a letter together with twenty different questions. When.
Yeah, why not?
His thing. His explanation will generate. Questions and understanding and.
No, I think, yeah, no, it needs to be interactive.
Yeah.
So either that you will present or soon, Tom, soon?
That's the way we've been doing.
Save save uh, probably three hours of dirt, always time on the road. But Tom.
I mean, so would be fine.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the applications aren't gonna go away.
I'll put an email to work towards that.
Yeah.
Alrighty. So. Any other discussion?
Um, guys, if you might want to not throw these away.
I'm gonna put it online.
Refering it, referring to it.
Bathroom seat.
This court decision.
We don't wanna throw that away.
We we we're throwing away.
We're not throwing away.
Don't throw away the court decision.
Yeah.
You're gonna need it in the future.
Oh, yeah. They do it.
Alright. So we're getting to adjourn, I will uh. Entertaining motion, emotion to adjourn.
Thank you, most.
So we have a motion and we have a second. We have a motion and a second. We're voting, Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mister uh, Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
And Mister Ryan gets a yes and we are done. Five in favor, no opposed.
Just say all opposed, let's see who raises their hand.